To hold order, we have two items on the agenda. Ewan?
Thank you, Councilor Chair. And for the record, my name is Ewan Wong. I'm the administrative services administrator for the city. And tonight, we'll be looking at our proposed mid-year budget adjustment. And what we will do tonight is just provide council with an overview of what we're proposing. And then, over the next couple of weeks, there will be chance for questions and answers. And we also have public hearing scheduled for October 26. And at that time, we'll collect public input, and then council will then deliberate after the public hearing is conducted.
Ewan?
Yes.
Before you start, just for the public to know that the city is now on what we call a biennial budget.
The third biennial budget.
So, a year ago, we had a big discussion on everything and passed a two-year budget. But like with anything, you have to make adjustments in your budget. And this is what we're basically being doing overall is making some minor adjustments with some pretty big dollars this time. But it is not like we're going through the whole new budgeting process. So, people look at it and think, man, they haven't really done a lot on it. A lot of it, we've been discussing for the last year and a half. So, I just want to be sure the public knows that.
Right. And as the councilperson just mentioned, this is actually our third biennial budget and mid-year budget adjustment. And what we're going to do tonight is very consistent to prior to mid-year budget adjustment, what we will try to cover is that we will look at update of general fund revenue projections with any changes in conditions. And we'll make housekeeping adjustments to incorporate prior council actions. And we will also propose certain service changes to reflect business activity and council priorities. Lastly, we will, these actions, in order for them to take effect, we will need to have certain legislation be put in place to, first of all, set property tax levy for 2016. And we will need to adopt ordinance to effect the budget amendments. And also, we will, we are proposing couple inter-fund loans will require a council resolution as well. So, those are basically will be going over tonight. And so, first of all, and we're looking at general fund portion of the budget adjustment. And on the revenue side, we're looking, we're reviewing all general fund revenues and look at what have changed, basically from 18 months ago or so, to see if the revenue for 2015 as well as 2016 needs to be adjusted upward and downward. And there's definitely a numbers of adjustment we're recommending at this time. And property tax, as you know, is our largest resource for general governmental operations. And at this time, we are generating 36 to 37 million dollars a year. And state law allows cities to increase our base property tax by the lower of 1% or inflation. And the inflation is defined by implicit price deflator, and it's based on September issue of the number. And if the inflation falls below 1%, council can still take action to take the 1% increase if there's a finding of substantial needs that we need 1% to sustain city services. And for this year, yes?
Mr. Person?
Yeah, the, I just want to clarify that this is, this is our major source of tax in taxable income. And that when we talk about a 1% increase in that, our costs of doing business with, you know, just the cost of any goods we buy is up about 3%. So, you take 1%, but our costs are going up about 3%. So, this is, this is why this is going to be an issue that we really need to take a hard look at.
Right. And in addition to that, this year, the implicit price deflator actually is below 1%. And the September issue of the Bureau of Economic Analysis of Federal Government published that if year over year, the IPD only increased by point 2.5%. So, in order for the city to take the 1%, we will need to take one additional action in order to do that. And based on the financial projection we made to council before, we present to council before, we really believe we need to at least maintain the 1% revenue source. And so, here is how the 1% will bring in. And as mentioned, the 1% is actually calculated on 2015's base levy. And so, the, basically, if we take the full 1%, it will bring in $357,000 additional of property tax revenue. And if we follow the 0.25% rate, it will bring 90,000. So, basically, it's about $270,000 difference. The administration is recommending council to take the 1%. And in addition to the base 1% increase, we do have about 1.1% in new construction. New construction, sorry. Property tax, which is about 397,000. And we had very minor annexation, we're bringing a little bit, over $1,000 in annexation property tax. And I don't know if council still remember, but in 2013, we actually had to make a correction to our property tax levy. And 2016 will be last of the third year to make the correction to restore the 2013 levy error. And in addition to that, there are some adjustments that administrative adjustment made by King County Assessors Office to our property tax levy row and their refunds or admits, they will then reassess that when they make refunds and collecting the following year. So, we have 30, about $77,000 from that. So, total estimated property tax levy for 2016 will be $37.2 million. And when we compare that number with the total 2015 actual levy of 36.5 million, it's actually 0.72% increase. I have to say that there's couple of items are really not included in the comparison. So, that's the reason of the 0.72% increase. Any question on property tax? One more point is that the preliminary assess valuation for 2016 is at 13.5 billion, which is about 5% above the 12.9 billion in 2015. So, we're actually going to expect a decrease in our tax rate from current 2.83 cents per thousand to 2.76 cents per thousand on the SaaS valuation in 2016. So, coming down from property tax, the second largest sales tax revenue is sales tax. And combined, the property and sales tax provide over 55% of general funds revenue. And that's why this are two major resource for the city. We're looking at, actually, up to September, the sales tax performing quite strong, pretty well this year. And we are anticipating the last quarter will be more in line with our budget projection. Overall, we are projecting a 7.5% growth from 2014 and 4% above our adopted budget number for 2015. And the increase of growth is triggered primarily by new construction increase of 27%. And that is one area that I think we need to watch because new construction is doing fairly well at this time due to both residential as well as commercial construction is going on and also in the pipeline. But at some time, that will likely to slow down again. And so, we just need to watch that, and I will have a suggestion later. So, new construction contribute to the growth. In addition to that, we also have pretty strong growth in auto sales as well as the service industry. And each grew by 10% from the year before. And our general retail and wholesale was very sluggish in the first quarter or so this year, but start to improve. And actually, at this time, we're looking at about 6% growth over the last year. So, that is really return to more the healthier growth rate. And this, the auto, service, and retail wholesale industry combined is about 77% of our total sales tax, and they contribute to about 83% of the growth, the increase in this year's sales tax. So, if we can maintain those momentums, then I think our sales tax will remain healthy. And again, this year's sales tax, we're expecting a 7.5% growth. And we think next year is going to be on top of this growth. We don't think will be as strong, but will be, we are projecting a 4% increase in 2016, but based on 2015 true-up value. And also, the sales tax, this is a base sales tax. We also have criminal justice sales tax and annexation sales tax will also be adjusted as well. So, combined, it's a pretty healthy adjustment on the sales tax side. And here's what I was trying to talk a little bit more in terms of a sales tax, especially construction sales tax, sales tax. And today, in 2015, we're looking at our composition of sales tax is very, very close to the pre-recession time of the composition. And we know the manufacturing sector change is because reporting method changed from a foreign business. And also, the construction side is almost identical to the historical norm of 14% of total sales tax. And what I'm suggesting is, basing on what we can see from the last 20 years or so, they are times the new construction sector will expand to beyond 14% to substantially higher than 14%. But that expansion typically don't last long. It lasts about two to three years during the construction boom, and then it will come down again. And when it come down, it will drop down to below, you know, 10% or so. So, what I would suggest is, in the future, when we have additional construction retail sales tax, we may want to set them aside as a one-time revenue and use those for capital and other one-time purpose. So, it will be marginal change in the city budget approach, but I think it will be safer so we don't need to face on substantial cuts when the boom year is over, especially construction industry is pretty susceptible. So, with that, we're going down into utility tax area. And utility tax used to be very easy to project and used to be predictable, it will grow a certain percentage each year. But over the last few years, we started to see this sector has some major changes. That's actually fundamental changes how business is going to be conducted. And so, there, which those factors are affecting a number of the utility tax areas that created more a downturn than a typical growth kind of pattern of utility tax. And for that reason, we are actually going to make a reduction, correction in utility tax area by pretty substantially 550,000 in 2015 and 700,000 in 2016. And the three major factor is, one is energy industry. And with the milder winter we have seen recently, as well as the cheaper energy price overall, that we are seeing our electricity utility tax and natural gas utility tax are not, not only not growing, but actually decreasing. And then, the second major industry change is the cellular industry. Under the Internet Tax Freedom Act, cellular data plan has always eligible for tax exemption. They are not subject to our utility tax. And in the past, the utility companies will pay tax on the bundled plan. So, when you have smartphone, it has voice and data, they typically pay tax on the full bundled plan price. But starting this year, we started to see that companies now account for that bundled plan separately. They may not show it on your bill as two separate line item, but they accounted for them internally as a two different revenue stream. And that allow them to deduct that data portion of the revenue from tax. And so, we have seen that from T-Mobile, and I just saw Verizon's invoice, and they are splitting that. We are making some adjustment for that, but it may increase, the adjustment may need to be even increased to, increased to higher level in the future. So, we are, out of this adjustment, $300,000 in 2016 is to accommodate the cellular data plan change. So, again, utility tax is definitely is one area we need to watch more closely, and also the overall conservation and it also contribute to the utility tax decrease as Development fees, that's including permit fees, plan review fees, and land, land use fees, and so forth. It's pretty hard to predict, but over the last few years, we have seen pretty substantial increase, you know, since 2011. And in 2015, we are going to see another, we predict, a 22% increase from the year before. And now, we will be surpass the 2007 pre-recession level of revenue in 2015. And we don't believe this high rate of growth is going to continue, although we love to see that to continue. We actually think next year will be coming off from the peak a little bit. So, it's actually a little bit lower than 2015's revenue level. But it's still going to be higher than our adopted budget. We're, we're making an upward adjustment by 480,000 here. And, yes?
Chair?
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
Can I ask, can you tell us a little bit about why you expect it to come off the peak? Is that, is that economic data that we've received, or?
Um, no, but we actually have some major commercial developments on the pipeline. And it's very possible 2016 will, will be as strong as 2015. But I, what I'm adjusting right now is just adjusting enough so we can accommodate the staffing increase. And we may have additional revenue that we will need to make adjustment next year. But again, I don't believe this peaks is going to be sustainable. And over the next, this year and next year, we may see some new peaks. But once those large commercial development is done, if we do not see additional pre-application activity, then, then we will definitely know that this is a peak. We try to adjust to a degree we know. We don't want to overly ambitious in our adjustment.
So, you're being somewhat conservative, maybe?
Yes, in this case, I'm more conservative. Just because the timing of development can be delayed or other factors, it's less predictable.
Okay. Thanks.
But again, the 480,000 adjustment in 2016 primarily is to accommodate some workload need, needed staff changes. And the department is proposing for FTE's increase and also re-class and upgrade some positions. And we will go into more detail later. Real estate excess tax is another area that we probably tend to budget a little bit more conservative now in recent years. In the past, we have budget much higher, but we learned a lesson that it's better for us to budget conservatively. And because the revenue is restricted for capital and debt service purpose, we, it will be better for us to have those money in hand before we spend them. And so, that will give us a little bit of leeway in what we can do with the money before we overcommit ourselves. So, we are projecting in 2016, 15, $400,000 more in real estate excess tax will be generated than our budgeted. It's pretty flat from last year, but is, again, is higher than our budget. And we are going to use that for capital purpose. So, this will be, there is a recommendation in allocating that funds. And state share revenue, after, you know, last few years, we have seen decrease of state share revenue due to state budget constraints. And now, for the first time, we're looking at some increase in state share revenue now. In the states adopted 2015, 17 budget, they restored the liquor excess tax to 100%, basically about $220,000 a year for the city. And they are also going to have some distribution on marijuana sales-related taxes. For us, it's a very small amount in the 2016 distribution. But that will change over time once we have, you know, depends on local retail stores and so forth, they will distribute that portion to us. And then, the fuel tax, there's additional fuel taxes projected in 2016 distribution, and actually, starting 2017, it will grow to about $220,000 per year. It's a small portion of fuel tax, but again, it helps the street maintenance and so forth. So, in addition to this adjustment, we're also to, we're also true up some miscellaneous grants and public safety distributions as well. That's the nature of the adjustment. So, in summary of what we just talked about, we will be making property tax adjustment based on the current information from King County. And by the way, the information, the number is still preliminary because King County typically doesn't finalize their property tax levy number until mid to late November. They are actually much earlier this year, but I think we'll still have an update to do when, before we do adopt a property tax ordinance. Sales tax, as I mentioned, this is combination of the base sales tax and annexation sales tax as well as criminal justice sales tax combined. We're looking at about 5% adjustment from adopted budget. And utility tax is a net decrease combined, is a 700,000, over 700,000 decrease. And in 2015, we actually have a one-time gambling tax collection, primarily is from prior year gambling tax owed but not paid, and we're collecting this year. So, that's just one time, once it's done, we don't, we don't anticipate, we anticipate the revenue will be pretty stable. And as I mentioned, we'll have additional real estate excess tax, but we'll be transferring to CIP funds to fund property acquisitions. State share revenue, 2015, we accept some increase and also more increase in 2016. We have some miscellaneous grants in 2015 that has matching expenditures as well. And lastly, is a permit fee adjustment. As you can see, I'm adjusting 2015 number more substantially, just to true up to what we are seeing right now. But in 2016, this adjustment is more moderate, just primarily to accommodate position increase, expenditure increase to support the permit activities. And then, this housekeeping adjustment, we're removing both seizure fund revenue and expenditure that we anticipate to get, but we, we have not seen that realize in the last couple of years. So, we think we'll take that out to be more true to the budget. There's some reimbursement on positions. Again, on the expenditure side, we are going to take a little bit closer look at that. So, that's the revenue side of adjustment. Here is a summary of expenditure side of adjustment on the general fund. And we will make pretty substantial adjustment in positions and cost of, in some, some position upgrades and so forth. And I will go into more detail in the next slide, but I want to explain some other adjustments for now. With the adjustment, positions, we have four new positions that will require some office equipment and cubicles, and so, the 43,000 is to account for that. And we also have some contract adjustment based on sales correction entities budget as well as Valicon's budget approved by the cities, member cities, that we are trueing up to those numbers. As I mentioned, we're eliminating the seizure fund adjustment. Earlier, I think last month or last, two meetings ago, I think council approved Regional Fire Authority Communication Consultant and Communication Plan. And so, 50,000 is accounted for that. And we have some grant related expenditures. In 2016, we want to extend our current, we have contracted arborist on an hourly basis, and currently, we're planning 60,000 a year. We want to continue that until next year to make sure that our priority one, safety-related tree maintenance and trimming and removal are taken care of. There are some minor adjustments along the way, but one, two key large adjustment negative or savings we want to account for is that we are seeing actually the LED street lights conversion is saving more power than we initially budgeted for. And also, we now are entering into phase two of LED light conversion to change over the puget-si energy on street lights. And so, we are account for some portion a half year in 2016 of PSE's energy saving as well in this adjustment. Also, we are looking at, in our budget assumption for 2016, we included 8% of adjustment or increase for employee medical plan. And it turned out, we only need to adjust by about 5%. So, there is savings on the employee medical premium as well. And this 250,000 is only in general fund portion of the saving, the overall saving is about $360,000. And last one item, a major adjustment is that we are contemplating some property acquisitions. Actually, the city has always been looking out open space and other kind of parkland adjustment acquisition opportunities. And we want to transfer 3.4 million dollars from general fund based on current year's revenue surplus and fund balance to allow the city to continue to make acquisitions of properties. So, that's really the biggest adjustment of within general fund. And so, with that, I will go into a little bit more details of the proposed position changes. I know this is a very busy, busy page, and it's probably not very easy to see on the overhead, but if anyone need a hard copy, I could hopefully provide that. So, I, first of all, I want to identify So I, first of all, I want to identify two areas. There are some positions and some adjustment has previously approved by council. They are shaded on this screen, looks like a gray color. And we also have some positions already being approved and already included in prior adjust, budget adjustments. And so what I'm trying to do is to pull all the position related ongoing cost adjustment that we committed to this year and show the, the total impact. And then, so in this column is the total cost and then the last column is the portion that impacts general fund. And as I mentioned before, that the total cost is 1.68, 6 million. And about 180,000 is previously adjusted already. And so this adjustment is 1.78 million dollars for all the positions. And the adjustment can be probably grouped in two sections. One section is self, revenue supported positions. And as you can see, all the CED positions are going to be supported by permit fee or inter-fund transfers, internal service fund transfers.
I'm sorry, Ewan.
Yes.
Mr. Person.
Yeah, I just want to verify with you that the positions that we're talking about that are being funded from the permits are what we call a limited, uh,
So.
Term, limited term position so that if the, when the building permits go down, then we can, as much as we don't like to do, do this, we could, if necessary, release those people because they're hired, they're not hired as a permanent employee, but as a limited term and they know that.
So there are four positions we, we talked earlier about that we are adjusting. One of those is limited term position and we are actually adding three regular positions. However, we have long discussion internally that this adjustment is based on fees. And so if the fees doesn't come in, then we will need to make staffing changes at that time. So that's fully understood. So this group are supported by permanent fees and we also have a couple of limited term positions proposed by community service department for the implementation of capital projects is supported by C, capital project transfers. And so this is one group and yeah, some of the private, previously adjusted position are also that way. And then there's another group is just, we're asking for additional positions and that is the police department and public, and the city attorney's office and really public safety related positions. So police department is asking for, for additional patrol officers. And also we have in prior years always had four additional supernumeral or we call it over hired positions, basic allow the police department to hire ahead before they have vacancies, to allow the 18-month training period to prepare those new recruits. And so when the vacancy actually occur, then they can step in and fill those positions. So those positions, while they're counted as a position, but the salary of those positions will be paid for through position, salary savings within the department. So we don't see actual financial impact from those positions. And the city attorney's office requested earlier, which being approved by council already to add that one additional legal assistant. And this is part of really completing their reorg to some degree because they tried to juggle positions earlier, but just realized they cannot cover all the grounds. So this is additional position that, that they proposed and council approved previously. So those are the primary position changes. And in addition to position changes, there's also some upgrades and reclassification or salary increases we are proposing. Most of them are either market-based adjustment because the survey of market is showing that they are behind the comparable jurisdictions or some are internal alignment. But, but they all have reasons or, or they are assuming additional responsibilities in the internal situations. And that's including a couple of finance administrative service area and the, there's a four in the community development as well, community department as well. And then executive department, human resource department and public works department. And combined, all those salary increase or upgrades, position upgrades about, it costs about 50,000 per year. And so of the 1.477 million primarily is the position increases. Is there a question? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Ravoni.
So I have a question about the four additional police officers. Will we get more information on the need for, for that, some reporting documents? I mean, there's direct correlation for the need for the building planners, but.
Definitely, we'll, we'll definitely provide council with additional information in terms of the reason, but, but in general, the reason we're proposing that is we're trying to change the way we're doing policing. We want to have more connection or engagement with the community as a whole. So it takes more time to do that and also want to increase the presence of police in the downtown area. So those are really your two goals of administration and, but we will definitely provide more statistics as well from the police department.
Thank you.
So this is just a summary based on what we just reviewed, the revenue adjustment for each year and combined two years as well as expenditure adjustments. And again, at the, in the end, we will be maintaining our fund balance at, you know, just slightly above the 12% target that in our fiscal policy. And the other thing I want to point out is while we made some substantial expenditure adjustment, ongoing expenditure adjustments with the position increases in general fund, we also have ongoing revenue adjustments to support that. And so the effect is that those will be supported, revenue-supported activities. And so they really will not have a negative, long-term negative effect to our long-term plan per se. So, so here's a slide to show that as we projected out, our future year deficit really remained pretty neutral as we initially adopted budget and not, not much changed. And still, we do still project a deficit, but it's because of other reasons than the, this year's mid-year adjustment. So that's kind of concludes the general fund overview and I'm going to just highlight some adjustments where we're, we're proposing outside of general fund. One of the largest adjustment is in the lease facilities fund and that's a fund account for all the city property that we're leasing out, that including Piazza, including the 200 mil building, also include this building's Iron Mountain lease and some other facility lease as well. So all the leases, majority of the leases are accounted for in here. Of those leases, the 200 mil building really was impacted mostly during the recession. A number of tenant either didn't review, renew their lease or moved away completely. And so the building really remained pretty vacant for the last few years. And now with the economy start to improve, we're seeing demand on office space again. And with the new tenants coming in, we have needs to provide new tenant improvements to accommodate those new tenants. And so we start to see a large demand in cash flow to, to fix or make those improvements and pay for those lease commissions in order to get them occupied. And what we're looking at is we will probably need to land, to do some inter-fund loan to provide for those tenant improvements and pay for those commissions in 2015 and then allow the fund to pay back with, over the next five years. And we're proposing to borrow this from the insurance fund, which is primarily funded with general fund money. And that will not carry any interest in that borrow, in that inter-fund loan. And the second large group of adjustment is going to be in the two capital project funds and one is a municipal capital facilities fund that is really all the parks, community centers, all the community amenities and buildings that we own are accounted for here. And in this fund adjustment, we are proposing some alignment between projects and also we want to provide for some room, a capacity to make some property acquisitions. Some of them are previously approved by council and some of them we're still negotiating and, and working on, but the overall proposed adjustment is 8.95 million dollars. And, and the 8.95 million dollars will be provided for from surplus of Sunset Core Park and also transfer, transfer of one-time money from general fund as we mentioned earlier. And also a four-year, $4 million inter-fund loan from utility funds. And basically we'll be borrowing from water utility and sewer utility fund over the next four years. And this loan will carry interest, market interest. And so it actually is going to be beneficial to the utility funds to earn a higher interest rate than the current short-term investment and also help the general fund so we don't need to go through a external financing process to raise the fund. And then in addition to the municipal facilities fund, our transportation capital project funds or fund 317 also have some trueing up of our grant projects and most of the, those projects are grant funded with one exception of, is the Sunset Land construction. The Sunset Land is the Ring Road or the Loop Road circulating the new proposed Sunset Park just by the new Highlands Library. And that construction is projected to cost 4.8 million dollars. At this time, it's still preliminary, we're proposing to finance that through local improvement district, but we may have other financing mechanism worked out a little bit later. But this is a current plan for now. So with all those adjustments combined, we're looking at a two-year revenue adjustment of 23.8 million and two-year expenditure adjustment of 28.5 million. And again, the fund balance, it will be, remain pretty stable at 84 million overall. So those are the financial adjustment highlights. I know I run through a lot of information, a lot of numbers very quickly, but really what we're trying to do tonight is just providing information to council. And over the next few weeks, we'll have time to look at them and review them. If any questions, feel free to contact me directly or we can provide council during the future council deliberation time. We are proposing to have a public hearing on October 26th and that will be at the regular council meeting to allow all the publics to provide any comments at that time. And then the council, we hope that will deliberate after you receive the public comments and then see if you want to make any change to the proposed budget. And then with that process, we anticipate we can probably finish, do the first reading on November 2nd and adoption on November 9th. So that's kind of the schedule. And I just want to mention that in your packet of material behind the PowerPoint, they are draft resolutions or legislations that will need to be enacted upon to carry out the proposed budget amendment. And all these documents at this time is just preliminary and we want to have it in front of you so you can start thinking of them. And we still need to have city attorneys to review and we still need to have King County assessors to give us the final information. So there will be changes, but we hope that changes are not going to be substantial. Again, I'm running through a lot of information pretty quickly and I hope if there's any question, I can answer at this point.
Any questions from council?
Or any additional information you would like to have, just like police statistics that we can provide?
Thank you, Ewan.
Thank you.
This committee hall is adjourned.